All right, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, June 20th, 2017. Is there anyone here to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, first, sort of a housekeeping issue. We inadvertently listed the continued public hearing for the seasonal cottage community on the agenda, even though we had agreed at the hearing last time to continue it to the meeting on July 18th. So because we have moved to continue it to the 18th, we were not going to be addressing that tonight. So if there's anyone here for that issue, that was an accidental inclusion on the agenda, and I apologize for any inconvenience.
Another one, point of order.
Sure.
We'd also moved our discussion on recreational marijuana cannabis to this meeting, but it is not
But did not make the agenda, right?
Sorry.
So I guess we'll put that on the agenda for the 18th as well.
The next meeting.
Yeah, I noticed that too. Okay, moving on to the planning board minutes for June 6th, 2017. Did everyone get a chance to look at that?
Yeah.
Any errors, omissions, corrections?
I motion to approve the minutes from June 6th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staining. All right. Moving on, A and Rs. The first one, 250 and 262 East Street. Is there someone here to speak to that? Mark, how are you?
Good evening. Mark Green, Harris and TruBay.
Good one, Mark.
Representing the Lapines. The Lapines is here tonight. And we have submitted an A and R plan for you to combine some land.
There guys want to see.
Come around.
The Lapines have purchased an existing house that is located at 250 East Street. And what this plan represents is combining the, some of the rear property, which is in Mary Lapine's name. So this parcel here with the existing house at 250, and still retaining enough acreage and area to satisfy the zoning requirements for the existing dwelling which they live at. There's no change in frontage of the property.
What are the, the two parcels, right? Is parcel one the upper part?
So, so initially, this parcel-
Was all one?
Was owned by Mary under this deed reference.
Okay.
David, Mary, and Luke, their son, purchased this dwelling here. So now, this is going to be known as parcel two.
Yep.
With the house and garage that's at 250. And at 262, their existing dwelling will still be known as parcel one.
Okay, so-
No net loss there, right?
No, it's just-
Right. But so just technically, is this joining this parcel-
Correct.
And then it's splitting into two?
Correct.
So we got a division and an addition kind of thing going on here?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a separate deed owned for the existing house by the three of them, and then Mary owns this. So there'll be a conveyance between Mary and them all to create these two parcels of land.
Okay. And we still have the frontage on both of them?
Yeah, there's no changes in frontage at all.
I don't see.
Department have any issues, questions, comments?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I motion to endorse.
Second.
262 East Street, Mary Lapine's.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'll start signing.
How can I help? I gotta look in your own times, I'm not.
Start signing until someone tells me to stop.
How many do you need? Mylar and one hard copy? You don't need two copies for two different patches?
Shouldn't need it. We can make copies when that's ready to get recorded.
I just didn't know if you, oh, okay. I wanted it with this. Thank you. I'm gonna have to go.
Keep going.
Sorry, did I just, oh my god, are you okay?
I think I made it.
All right, sorry.
It was zippy for a moment.
Sorry.
Oh, god.
You can sue if you want.
I didn't quite see that. Can you do that again?
I watched the film.
Heads up, heads up.
Watch the film.
She's probably lying.
You sure? Engaged by a city official that's caught on camera.
Anyone? Just can you get the application to?
You need it?
All right. And next up, another A and R for Main Street, Payson Lane, Brewster Avenue, Park Street.
So again?
Is that you too? Okay.
Yes. Civil duty.
What are you doing now?
So, we have filed this A and R on behalf of Williston North Hampton School. Jeff Tanis here tonight. Williston throughout the years have been acquiring parcels of land in this quadrangle between Main, Park, Brewster, and Payson Lane. Most recently, they've acquired three parcels, being the old Helping Hand House at the corner of Brewster and Main, 216. They've acquired the house at 212, and the house at 208. So this plan consolidates it all into one parcel containing 8.448 acres, combining it through into one parcel of land. So we're showing all the existing buildings.
Okay, so these two houses are the ones that are in the parcel?
Correct.
The rest of it is the whole block?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. In the future, or Williston is working on some new plans for some dormitories, which we've been meeting with planning in the city about, and we will be back just to kind of show you what is being proposed. But there's some new dorm, a new dormitory being proposed in this location here, in keeping with the style of the existing dormitories that they built on Payson.
Did those have some form of pre-existing exemption for frontage?
Yes.
I guess that they're both under 100.
Correct.
Those are the existing ones, though.
Yeah, they're pre-existing.
Right.
Right, but these ones aren't going into the lot, into the lot.
Correct.
They're not owned by Williston, yeah.
Yeah.
Planning Department, any comments? So, okay.
I motion to endorse the A and R for Main Street, Payson Lane, Brewster Avenue, Park Street, Williston North Hampton School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, all right.
Your dream, forgot to answer.
Yeah, right?
I'll get Chris.
I haven't yet.
Is this going to Jessica's one?
Yes. I have what I need.
But you can just leave the rest of the file and I'll just see if it's in the form A.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you, Mark. All right, moving right along. Request for site plan approval for 46 Union Street, Black Labyrinth Tattoo. How you doing? Head up to the podium and give us a little rundown. So you want to just explain to us generally what you're hoping to do here?
Yeah, we're looking into moving into 46 Union Street and creating a small custom tattoo and art studio.
And what's the space right now?
It's been empty. Apparently it was-
The habitry, formerly?
The habitry, okay.
So there's four commercial spaces and four residential rental units in that building. It's a mixed-use building downtown.
No, please, anybody who has questions?
Are you moving from somewhere to here, or is this a new business?
This is a new business. I've been tattooing for 11 years now.
Ask a few more?
Yeah, yeah.
How do you, how do you get rid of the materials that you collect, your refuse?
The sharps? Well, right now, we're dealing with this company called GRP that I've been looking at. It's a mail-in sharps disposal system. That way, we don't have to hold as much on smaller studio. We're not going to have too much to hold on, and we won't have to deal with large trucks picking it up on Main Street. So this is the one I've found. I've also been OSHA blood-of-wort pathogens instructor for the last four years, and as far as mail-in systems work, this is the best that I've found.
And what about other sort of unique waste that you guys generate? Is there other stuff that you need to dispose of that's beyond sort of regular?
This is the sharps that I was just talking about is the only thing that's going to be a regulated medical waste.
Okay. And other stuff like ink or other things like that, that can all just sort of go-
Just goes in the normal-
Regular trash?
Yeah, there's not enough, like, blood in it that would make it a regulated waste.
Gotcha. And, and I think it says in there, there's already a dumpster, is that right?
There is a dumpster in the back behind the building. At the time of this, we were talking with the landlord about possibly being able to use that one, but I think we're just going to have to add a small dumpster right next to it.
Okay.
But, so you have bathrooms for clients, and you have an employee restroom. Is there a need to have any sort of like sink outside of the restroom for any cleaning, or?
There's a hand washing sink that we have outside of the restroom. I did the best small architectural sketch that I could do.
It's good.
I think that outside wall is this little square.
Outside the ba, outside the restroom?
Okay.
Okay, that's going to be it.
Yeah, that's where the hand washing sink would be.
Yeah.
And there's also a janitorial closet that we'll be putting in the mop sink, due to the fact everything's 100% disposable. There's no need for us to have an auto-leave room for the city of East Hampton.
And are you, are you going to be renting out these booths to other, other artists?
We found as an LLC, and everyone will be hired on as an employee.
And it looks like no real deliveries, other than sort of regular mail and FedEx kind of stuff?
All UPS, FedEx.
I see there's no off-street parking needs because it's 1894. That's an old building.
Hmm. Any questions?
No.
Let's just go through our criteria real quick. So, well, first of all, I guess, is there anyone else here to speak to this, comments about this proposal? No. All right. So first is conformance with the provision of the ordinances of the city of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and applicable rules and regulations of state and federal agencies. I assume there's a lot of other stuff you've got to deal with, the health department and that sort of stuff when you're getting this set up?
Yeah, we've already spoken to Jackie.
Okay.
Have all the regulations. Like I said before, being an OSHA instructor, that stuff's pretty-
Yeah.
Pretty easy for me to try to set up the cleanest possible environment that I can.
Yeah. Protection of city amenities and abutting properties, the minimizing of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique and important natural scenic or historic features on the site. Doesn't look like there's any work being done that would impact any of that. Convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site in relationship to adjoining ways. As Jim said, there's no parking requirement. And there is no onsite parking, is that right?
We have two spots in the back for employees.
Employees, yeah. Addicts, we have the methods of disposal and sewage and refuse, and the drainage of surface and subsurface waters. So we talked about that a little bit. It doesn't sound like there's anything exceptional, other than the sharps, which we've got a proposal in place for that. Adequate means of protecting wetlands, water sheds, aquifers, and well areas doesn't apply. Mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect on the city's water supply and distribution systems, sewage collection and treatment systems, fire protection in streets. You don't use any sort of large quantities of water or anything with this, right? I think we've been down this road before.
It's relatively small.
Yeah. Provision for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment, parking, lighting, and internal traffic control. I think you mentioned in your application, the lighting you're talking about is internal, right?
Yeah, we're not going to add anything, like, no neon lights or anything in the front.
Yeah.
Just the task lighting and-
It also states that you want to try and do some art showings?
Yeah, we were hoping to be able to get involved with like the Arts Council in East Hampton. It's a really small lobby, so, you know, maybe like Art Walk nights have like four or five pieces or something for people to stop by to check out.
Applicants' efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape through design features such as vegetative buffers and the retention of open space or agricultural land, that doesn't apply here. Minimization of the area over which existing vegetation is to be removed doesn't apply. Consistency of the development with respect to setback, area placement, parking, architectural style, landscaping, that also does not apply. So I think we've covered everything. Anybody have any other questions?
Just a question. You say the signage, you're just going to have a sign in the window?
Well, yeah, we're, like, an interior vinyl sign.
Yeah.
Just attached to the inside with the studio logo. And then we want to do the phone number on the top, and then just kind of one of the quotes we've been going with, it just says "You are beautiful" at the bottom.
And that's, we don't approve that, right? I mean, that has to go through the sign ordinance?
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Building inspector.
The sign goes to the building inspector.
Yeah.
Just, you know, a note to the board, though, because we've had in downtown buildings that are mixed-use, so as long as the board feels that everything's been addressed in terms of potential conflicts with upstairs residential, doesn't sound like anything.
Right, you mentioned in here, you know, you don't plan on having noise or loud music or anything like that in your application.
Just normal music, nothing too loud, because we have to work too, so.
What do you expect your hours to be?
We're hoping to do something like nine to seven. We're not completely certain on that yet, but I don't see it being later than seven.
Okay.
And we're also planning on being closed on Sundays and Mondays.
Okay. Seems pretty straightforward to me. Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
I motion to approve the site plan approval for 46 Union Street, Black Labyrinth Tattoo.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, standing, all right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So next steps is the planning department will send you a copy of the decision once it's drafted. I'll send it to you via email, and I'll send you a hard copy in the mail, and then you're good to go. You just need to work with the health agent, building inspector, and everybody else.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck, thank you. All right. Next up, request for special permit on Plain Street Forefront Power LLC. Someone here to talk about that?
Yes.
All right.
I'm Corey Cogan. This is Juliette Kaplan. I'm from TRC Environmental. On behalf of Forefront Power, we're here tonight for our special permit application for installing one megawatt solar facility off of Plain Street in East Hampton.
This is the updated materials?
Those are the updated materials. I apologize if there's one missing. The aquifer protection board might have spelled on it.
Hood lumps, I tell you.
We can always take you more.
Thank you.
So this is, I'm not going to pronounce the property under his name right, but then it's-
What was the second name? Sorry.
It's okay.
This, there were electronic copies of this was given to me on Wednesday, and I forwarded it to the board.
Yeah.
It was put into the Dropbox, so you already have it.
Okay.
I just didn't know there was an update.
Exactly what you received last week, Wednesday.
All right. You can keep going, sorry.
That's okay. Give everyone a chance to settle in, it's fine. So this property is approximately, it's just about 16 acres. We plan on using 5.7 acres for the solar facility. It includes only 0.02 acres of tree clearance, which I think is maybe, maybe four trees or six trees. We really are maintaining as much of the onsite vegetation as possible. We went out and delineated one wetland on the site. It was mapped as a USGS stream, and we found no evidence of banked bed or flow. It's really just a vegetated wetland at this point. We're avoiding that entirely. We're avoiding the 100-foot buffer zone entirely. So here's the, the general solar layout. We're going to, there'll be, we can say 0.4 acres of the previous surface, made up entirely of the gravel access road and the foundations for the inverter and transformers. And everything is included, the stormwater management report in entirety is included in the special permit application. We're in the aquifer overlay protection district, and we've met all of the regulations as well, and met with them just this afternoon. I know they're going to be providing some comments on this application right now.
So, I guess there's going to be a lot of questions here, but just to start, can you explain a little bit about what physically would be built, and what you would see there as far as what's in the, inside the fencing? Is that somebody else?
No, 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 I'm, I'm sorry. What was, can you repeat the question?
I'm curious if you can just explain what will actually be constructed if this is all done inside the fencing, like what the panels will look like, and, you know, any other buildings and-
Okay. So we have a visual assessment, which was part of the supplemental application. There we go. And it's-
It's, it's the entire solar array, so it's kind of split into the two arrays. The only other things, the only other constructed things there are the inverters and transformers that are kind of housed in those little green sheds. So we did this visual-
Yep.
-digital assessment here from a few-
These are the vantage points right here. This is more of a bird's eye view. And then we've got, this is from viewpoint one.
And so the, the panels that are on there, are those stationary, or do they move at all?
They're stationary.
They'll be stationary?
Yep, they're fixed, yep.
And how big are those, what's the size of each one of those panels, roughly?
Approximately eight feet, eight feet high.
They're iffy up off the ground?
Yep.
Okay.
Is that at the highest point?
Yes.
And the posts go in about four and a half, five feet deep? Is that about right?
Um, it's not right yet.
Yeah, I mean, depending on the soils, but generally, it'll, it'll go down, yeah, about four feet. And the way that, the way that the wrapping system is designed, it's pile-driven, and so it can accommodate slight shifts in slope. And so if there's no brading, we're not going to have to do any, any work or any moving, moving soil around. And then basically, you just drive the piles in, make sure the top is even, and just kind of put everything on top like that, and it's here, obviously. This, this view is from looking behind it.
Hey, Ed, Ed, would you mind if, if you could come to the mic, just so we can pick it up for video? No, that's okay. Just for the, for the record.
And so this, this view is, is looking behind the, the site at it. And there's nothing there now. We were planning on potentially putting some, some younger trees back there in the event that anything does eventually go there, just to provide screening ahead of time, so.
Meaning that the, sort of where-
Which direction are we looking?
Hold on, sir.
No.
Sir, this is looking, I guess, south?
South of Plain Street.
So what you're saying is where, where the viewer in this picture is right now, there's no, there's nothing constructed there at the moment, yeah?
So where was this taken from?
Here, let me scroll up and show you the vantage points here.
If you folks, if we can just wait and let the board ask questions first?
We'll open it up to the public.
We'll open it up for public comment after that, okay?
So you'll see number one right here, so looking south. This is Plain Street right here. And also, there is a landscape plan added to our civil, civil set-
Yeah.
-that we sent.
And so then what other buildings or, or structures are you going to have to put on site?
No buildings at all.
Nothing?
Nope. So it's just, I'll switch back to the site plans. Two transformer pads.
And what will those look like? I mean, that's-
Just made out of concrete, just like a pad.
But I mean, transformer pad, I mean, there's going to be transformers mounted on the pad, so how big, what is that going to look like?
I think we have in the spec sheets under details, I think we have for the size of these.
While she is looking that up, so you've got the, sorry, you've got the panels, the transformer pads, and the transformer houses. And then along the access road, there will have a couple of poles that we'll put in for the interconnection out on this street to run the power up there.
Okay.
So it'll be trenched up until, up until about here, and then coming down to the road, up, sorry, up until about here, and then there'll be four or five poles here that allows to interconnect.
So the top of that screen, the wires will come up, they'll be underground there, and they'll go straight up with poles out of it?
Yeah, four or five poles, and then that'll connect to the point of interconnection, which is right down here on Plain Street.
So those are existing poles that you're going to connect to on Plain Street?
We're going to put them in.
Okay, but then the one on Plain Street, it'll tie into connecting, okay. And the new poles that you're putting up, how big are they, are they just a regular?
Just a regular pole, yeah.
Okay, are they wooden?
Wooden.
Yeah, okay.
And so there's, it's pretty heavily wooded, I guess, east of the site, and so they would blend in with the existing trees.
You've indicated the entire thing is going to be fenced in. Two questions. One, can you describe the fencing? And two, is there going to be any additional interior fencing, for instance, around those transformers that are on the pads?
So to, to, I'll start with the second question first, because it's real easier. There are the transformers and all that will be housed within a little transformer box, basically. And that'll be locked, and you won't have access to it, the public. And the exterior fence is going to be seven feet high?
Yes.
And it'll be six inch-
Sorry, did you say seven?
Seven feet high, and it'll be six inches of clearance to allow animals to come and go as they please.
Wildlife to go under.
Six inches.
What would the assessment value?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Please.
Bernie, Bernie.
Wait, wait till we get done with our questions, then we'll open it up to the public. And so when you say the transformers are going to be inside a box on the pad, and the size of that, I mean, do we have a, I think I might be looking at-
Yeah, I apologize. I looked for details. I can't seem to find them on here.
Yeah.
We can definitely get those to you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea of, you know, if you were to go to this hypothetical site and what you would see. So I'm just trying to figure out that part.
I can get an example.
That'd be great.
Image and dimensions, send to you guys.
The stormwater document here shows a picture of a culvert. Where is that culvert on the site?
Broadbrook.
The culvert that's existing on the site, because we're not installing one?
No, you're not installing one, but you have a picture of an existing one.
It's on Plain Street. There's, I think it was where Whitebrook, I guess, used to be.
Whitebrook, sorry.
It's a massive culvert. It's right underneath what's now a gravel road that was accessed and it's, it's in there.
Okay, so you're not using that road or impact?
Is that where we're accessing it? Yep.
Have you, have you done a, a conditions assessment on that culvert to see if any of the equipment that you're going to be using, would, that, that culvert is structurally sound, or that you will impact it at all?
No, we haven't done any sort of structural assessment of that culvert. It's a, it's an oversized culvert for what is there.
Yeah. No, I understand, but if it-
With big wing, well, I mean, we obviously haven't, we haven't done an assessment, but-
It actually is, is handling flow, though. Is that correct, or is it?
It didn't appear, there was no flow, and there's no indication that there is flow there. We didn't find evidence of a perennial stream. I'm sure it's a connect, it's a biological connection of some sort, but for what, and that's why I say oversized, for what it's conducting now, it's, it's, it seems oversized.
It, it, yeah.
Big concrete.
Probably runs intermittently.
Yeah, maybe for storm passage. Other than that, it's connecting wetland areas.
Have you guys received the comments from the city engineer that came out today?
Yes.
Okay. So do you have any responses to sort of those issues that were raised there? If we just go down them. I think the first one is, he asked, you know, are-
The stormwater document here shows a picture of a culvert. Where is that culvert on the site?
Broadbrook.
The culvert that's existing on the site, because we're not installing it?
No, you're not installing one, but you have a picture of an existing one.
On Plain Street, there's, I think it was where Whitebrook, I guess, used to be.
Whitebrook, sorry.
It's a massive culvert. It's right underneath what's now a gravel road that was accessed and it's where it's from.
Okay, so you're not using that road or impact?
Is that where we're accessing it?
Yeah.
Have you, have you done a conditions assessment on that culvert to see if any of the equipment that you're gonna be using? Would, that, that culvert is structurally sound? Or that you will impact it at all?
No, we haven't done any sort of structural assessment of that culvert. It's a, it's an oversized culvert for what is there.
Yeah, no, I understand, but if it...
With big wing, well, I mean we obviously haven't, we haven't done an assessment, but...
It actually is handling flow though? Is that correct, or is it...
It didn't appear, there was no flow and there's no indication that there is flow there. We didn't find evidence of a perennial stream. I'm sure it's a, it's a biological connection of some sort, but for what, and that's why I say oversized, for what it's conducting now, it's, it seems oversized.
Probably runs intermittently.
Yeah, maybe for storm passage. Other than that, it's connecting wetland areas.
Have you guys received the comments from the city engineer that came out today?
Yes.
Okay, so do you have any responses to sort of those issues that were raised there? If we just go down them, I think the first one is, he asked, you know, are ballast block foundations support proposed to support the modules?
And Ed addressed that before. We're using the older pole-driven.
Yeah, the pile-driven. So yeah, we're not gonna use any ballast.
Okay.
And then the second one, the flow dissipation improvements. I ran that through our stormwater engineer. And he's supposed to be getting me back a summary, but he's saying that he doesn't believe that that's necessary.
Okay.
At this site. With the stormwater results and the model that was run, he doesn't think it's necessary.
And then it looks like his third point, which is also labeled number two, there's some discrepancy about the actual area?
Yep, and we apologize. It really is .4 acres.
Yeah.
So we have it wrong in the permit application.
Okay.
Correct in the stormwater manager report, and that is, it's only the gravel road and the transformer pads, the inverter pads. That's all the impervious surface.
And the gravel road is sufficient for your uses? Are, as it is, there's no improvements that you need, I guess, other than this issue maybe with the culvert that...
Right.
Chris raised, but there's, you don't, there's not gonna be needs to improve that to get in there?
So we're gonna improve the, the access road.
There's a detail for road.
So yeah, we are going to improve it.
Okay, and so what are you doing for that?
We're gonna use gravel.
Okay.
And we're gonna have to have sufficient access for fire EMS in the event that there's any emergencies on the site that need to be, to get there. In addition to that, there'll be a 15-foot buffer around between the fence and the panels themselves for circulation for emergency vehicles.
And access to the fenced area is gonna be, it's gonna be locked, correct?
It'll be locked and there'll be a Knox box there.
So emergency services can access it, okay.
With the road, you said you're going to use gravel or more to it than that? Are you gonna put different layers and...
That is, it'll, right, it'll be, it'll be, it's designed to be able to sufficiently hold the access that we'll have to do. So like three or four times a year for maintenance, and it's designed so that emergency vehicles can safely pass, they'll take the weight. And so it's the, you know, general sieve testing layering, so the sand, sand layer and then the gravel layers that will accommodate those kind of vehicles. And for construction purposes, but other than that, this road is not gonna be used all that often.
Right. I think it says, you expect about three times a year for regular maintenance, is that right? Yeah. And that's a single person going out there in a pickup truck, or is it a sort of...
Yeah, one or two guys, just making sure the panels are clean.
Yeah.
In the event that there's any sort of electrical outage, we need to send someone out for service, that would be at law. But otherwise, we wanna let it do its thing.
Yeah. Just moving on to the rest of these city engineer comments, the hydro seeding being completed by October 1st if possible. I guess that's just a suggestion there.
That, that we can accommodate, we anticipate being able to do final stabilization prior to that.
Okay. And how about the pollinator-friendly meadow seed mix?
Absolutely. That's completely, that's completely doable. We're happy to, it just, anything that's low growing, so even though we need to, we can't let anything grow up in the shade stuff. But we're gonna do that and have the regular mowing if necessary. So it'll be a meadow mix as long as it's sufficient to stabilize all the soils.
And so how, how do you handle the growth and the mowing there? Is that part of the three or four times a year that you go out there? Is it someone would mow?
If it needs to be mowed, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then the final one is he's just asking for a copy of the stormwater protection plan. Anybody else feel free to chime in with any questions, sir?
So the, the plan with the access road calls it a medium plasticity soil access road. And the two details that I'm looking at, one is a low-plasticity soil access road and one is a moderate soil access road. Is there a medium-plasticity soil access road detail that I'm missing? Or is that the moderate soil access road? On page C101, it says medium-plasticity soil access road. And on C501, it just gives me a lower or moderate.
So the low-plasticity soil access road is our supposed road around, inside, between the fence and the panels. So that will not have gravel. It'll just have space that's maintained for fire trucks, ambulances, whatever.
Okay, I see that, yeah.
And then the, I believe...
Medium means moderate?
Yeah, I, median plasticity, and then we say moderate. I think it's the same thing. But that is something I can clarify.
Okay, and, and when you do the calculations for impervious, are you calculating both the low and the medium in your calculations? For the .4 acres?
I'm not sure that the low is included.
Yeah, if we're not doing improvements to that, we're not putting anything down over it, it's not changing the imperviousness of what's already there.
It's just compacted native soil.
Yeah, right.
The 996 kilowatts, now this is just a point of curiosity. Is this, are you trying to get under a gig intentionally? Is there something that you're, or it just happens to add up to that?
Happens to add up to that.
Okay, I just had to check.
You did one more panel?
Can you explain, there's, there's some stuff in here, but just so everyone knows, can you explain a little bit about the construction process and sort of the time that it would take? And what that would involve and the traffic, that kind of stuff that people could expect?
Sure. So the, the construction it would start, we're hoping to start in early April. The first thing would be site mobilization, clearing the existing vegetation, basically just mowing down what's there. And then bringing, we would have deliveries periodically throughout, throughout the couple of months that were, that are there. They'd be able to lay down everything out on site. The actual site construction would involve pile driving and then laying sort of crossbeams over on top of the piles. And then laying the panels on top of that, and then a couple electricians can go and they can wire everything up. There'd be some trenching for some of the DC wiring and then bringing the AC wiring from the transformer pad out to the poles. And then we'd be placing the overhead poles out to the road in order to interconnect with the existing utility grid. We expected to take three or four months. Right now, I'm conservatively estimating commercial operation the end of October. We think we can probably get done before that, but...
2018?
Yes.
It'll be normal business hours generally, right?
Yeah, normal business hours.
So we're not gonna do construction on the weekends or, you know, after, I think we'll be doing eight to six or something like that. So noise levels will be normal with consistent work hours, nothing outside of the range of that is necessary.
My biggest concern, as I read it, and it took a while to get to appendix K, was the decommissioning. Which I thought was actually very well-written and comprehensive and talked about the city's liabilities, exactly what you would do in performance. But it ended up in your application, coming out to be about a $35,000 bond that you were suggesting. And the problem I had is that while it seemed very comprehensive in how you would approach that, I have no way of valuing what the work is. And whether $35,000 is actually a number that would secure the city. How did you arrive at that number?
So that is a number that we've used previously of systems of a similar size. It's something that we're, as we go through and as we, as these costs become finalized, we'll be able to finalize them as well. We don't expect it to be anything more than that, but once we have a final number, we'll be able to substantiate that and provide it to whoever needs to see it.
Generally, when we put together these sorts of things, that it would be written in as a condition that a bond would be set at a certain rate. So we, at least from my perspective, I mean, there may be some tools that we might be able to use, but in general, we need to know, I think, right?
Yeah, and there is, I'm trying to find in the bylaw, there's something about the decommissioning cost taken into consideration, sort of general increases.
7.3, 0.8, 0.6 is the financial surety section of the zoning.
Yeah, so the amounts are all included mechanism for cost of living adjustment. But I, I mean, and I... I mean, the decommissioning to me is also a part that jumped out at me, and so I don't know how we go about verifying that. If that's something that the city engineer can look at or if we can...
Certainly give it to him and see if he has...
And see if he feels qualified, or if we need to get somebody else to take a look at it. Because I do think that one of the concerns would be, you know, that nightmare scenario of abandonment, and then we're sitting there with stuff in a field that we can't move. That segues, I had a couple of questions about the decommissioning plan as well. It talks about...
Total fracture?
This is in the decommissioning plan, it's on the, I guess it's the second page after the cover page. So at the top, there's a paragraph that starts following coordination. And the last two sentences of that paragraph, it says, however, in the event of a total fracture, the interior materials are silicon-based and may not consider being hazardous materials. Disposal of these materials at a landfill will may be permissible. So I'm assuming that's if something catastrophic happens, right, and a panel breaks?
Exactly.
And so are they disposable in a landfill, or are they not, they are disposable?
Yeah, it's made of silicon and glass and aluminum.
Okay.
And in all the spec sheets that we, and cut sheets that we include in the, with the building permits, we'll include all the building materials?
Yeah. And your estimate of the $35,000 for the decommissioning, that, that would basically be to restore the property to what it is today? Okay. And, and it says in here in the plan that the estimate is being refined and subject to change. Is there a way to sort of get to a more concrete number, or I'm curious? That's, that's gonna be a key part for us, right, is figuring out. And so I'm just trying to, if we can have some confidence, either from what you're preparing, or maybe it doesn't matter, we have to go to the city engineer and have them look at it or something. But I mean, I think that that's probably something that we're gonna have to figure out.
Is it a percentage of the capex cost, or...
I have to go back and, and double-check. Like I said, it's something that we had used for a similar-sized system. I can, A, we're happy to work with your engineer on finalizing that number in the next month or so. And we'll, we'll come back with, with some numbers for him to tickle.
Okay. And then the other, the last page there is the use of decommissioning assurance. And it, and it provides that you'll decommission within one year of discontinued operation. I think the solar bylaw calls for 150 days, and I'm wondering if that's an issue. I don't know if this is sort of a form you guys generally use, or have used on other projects. But I think it's, it's within 150 days under the bylaw of either abandonment or discontinued. So as long as you guys are aware of that and comfortable with that, I think that'll make me feel more comfortable.
I agree.
All right, so we have a lot of issues. You guys have any questions right now, or?
Yeah, where's all the power going at your generating? Where's it going?
So it goes right back onto the, onto the grid. We're, Kelsey, if you want to talk about the smart program?
You're hiding in the audience.
So as Ed said, I'm Kelsey Crane from Ford Pride. As Ed said, it goes to the grid, but this project is slated to be a community solar project, which means that 50% of the energy or more would go to individual residents. So that they are able to get energy without having it on their roof. And then the other 40, whatever percent goes to a university or large commercial user. So it does go onto the grid, but then we are responsible for getting people to sign up for the energy that is producing. So we work with Eversource to make sure that it's done.
How will this affect the average East Hampton household?
They could save money if they, if they wanted to subscribe to our system. I mean, it could be anyone in the Eversource territory. But our sales pitch for this is that we can give you a discount on what you're paying now. It's a credit. So it's kind of like you, if your bills, it's not gonna be this, but like if you have $100 a month in energy, we ask you to pay us $85. So you're saving $15. It's kind of like that sort of a net metering credit. So it can benefit, if they choose, it won't, everyone won't get the benefit unless they choose to sign on to the subscriber.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So my understanding of how distribution works with solar is that each sort of feeder line has a max of five megs. So will the people who are able to sign up for this program only be served by those feeder lines? Or, so it's anybody in the community?
Yeah, so it's everyone in the western Eversource area. So there's, we, we've worked on other projects that we're doing, so it can be anywhere around, but everyone can sign up if they want to.
But you have to have Eversource in order to get this?
Yeah, so, yeah. So this is in an Eversource territory.
What's Forefront's experience with these sorts of facilities?
We have extensive experience. We've built some en masse. I'm not exactly sure of the locations. But we've, we have some community solar ones, some in, what is, where are the Patriots? What is that?
Foxborough.
Foxborough, yeah. So yeah, we have, we worked on a community solar project that is opening there. So we have talked to people who are going to help us sell the solar. We've built these before. Our engineer who's working very close, our internal engineer is very experienced in math.
No questions now from anybody? All right, anybody here from the public who would like to ask some questions? This is, so this is gonna be a little bit awkward so we can share the podium, but if you can come up and ask your questions and, or comments to us, then we can get your name and make sure everything is recorded for the camera.
Well, except for questions. And I did print some literature out for you. According to someone who's...
Can you just give your name and address first?
103 Plain Street.
Your name?
Christine Prusak. I will be in the backyard. Your panels should be facing the hill, and I'm at the top of the hill. So I don't appreciate this, but...
Do you want to hand me that material and I can hand it up to the board?
Well, I was gonna flip through some of it first. But supposedly, it's a relatively new technology, and they really have no data collected about the side effects of solar power. And one of my big, one of the big things, there's, you have absolutely no liquid running through the pipes in your solar panels, none of that whatsoever. So what's carrying the power to... There's no fluid?
No, there's no fluid. There's some...
What are the panels made of?
Silicon, glass, and aluminum.
Is there any salt in the panels?
No.
Okay, 'cause that's one of the things, molten salts and other hazardous chemicals. They say if you're going to power the world with solar, there's a map in one of these, you need to place solar panels all over the area of the world. And so we have very limited land, open space in East Hampton, very limited. And I think it's time to let some land grow. And especially, this is over the aquifer. So I kind of really am upset. We've already had some toxicity in our water. Hence, we built a water treatment plant. Are we gonna have to build another one? So that's one thing. And how, and where, how long have you been in business, your company?
Forefront Power in itself is, has been around since March, but we are a legacy of SunEdison.
Are you Forefront Power, the five of you?
No, we're just...
For two of you.
Yep.
So are you gonna be here in 10, 15 years to clean up this if it does blow over? We did have a, that line of wind that took out the mountain.
Right, so I mean, I think that's, and that, there's a decommissioning plan in here, which is what we're talking about.
But it's too late once it's broken down.
Well, no, so that's the point, is that one of the requirements here is that there will be a bond with an amount...
You're gonna be around.
Hold on, hold on. So that's the point, is that, because you're entirely right, that this is the kind of project that if they build something like this and abandon it, the company goes under and there's no one to clean up. So part of the structure under the bylaw and what we were just discussing with the applicant, is that there would be a bond, so there'd be funds available. So if, let's assume a worst-case scenario where Forefront goes out of business and everybody heads for the hills, and we've just got these panels there?
We do.
There, there would be enough money there set aside so that if the city had to go in and actually remove this and level it and put down grass seed and everything like that, that there would be funds there so that it wouldn't be a city expense. Because you're entirely right. I think that's a very valid concern for our project.
The other thing is, how do you clean them? We all get dirty windows. How are you gonna clean them?
A couple times a year.
With what?
Water in there.
Water in what?
In there.
Vinegar?
Yeah.
That's gonna go into the soil and change the acidity of our water. That's a whole group that's, they're all different.
Oh, so there's only one copy of each one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we can, you want to email them out?
I will scan them and email them to the board. I will scan them and email them to the board.
They only collect for three hours, correct?
No.
Yes.
Okay, so-
I spoke to a solar energy engineer.
Okay, but let's not get into a back-and-forth with them, so if you want to ask us questions or ask them questions, you can, but let's-
Well, that's part of the question.
Yep.
So-
So you think that they only collect for-
They'll get dirty, your windows get dirty, you have to clean them. How efficient is it really gonna be? And is it really gonna benefit our community? And then it's the open space, that's my argument.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure.
Yeah, I'd like to address the map here, if I might.
Sure, can you give us a-
You're still gonna come up here, though, and state your name and address.
Well, my name is Ben Root, I live at one fifteen Plain, this is my driveway.
Okay.
This is my family room. This is my original house, Bernie Gol built for me in nineteen seventy-four, January seventy-five. That land was my grandfather's land, and my father's land was today called Gustina Property, okay? In seventy-four, my father-
Can I just ask you to come up to here, because this all gets recorded, so-
The people at home can't hear you.
I want you to see this line.
Okay.
Those two lines are my driveway, approximately twenty feet of right-of-way.
Okay.
It's fifty feet, twenty of which is used for proper drainage that my father put in at his expense when I bought that land from him in nineteen seventy-four.
Just to the mic, just so everyone's here.
So if you look in the town records, you will see that there is an easement on that fifty feet that was put by Francis G. Root. Okay? That land is transferred between Francis, between my father, to Francis G. Root, to Virginia Gustina. Now, I, my wife, not I, I don't take credit for it, built a great wall. Okay? If that wall comes out, I'm gonna have a flood going into my garage. Okay? The right-of-way technically is fifty feet. Now, what they refer to is wooded land, doesn't have a single tree on it. They made the statement that the poles are going in an area that is heavily wooded. The only wooded land is on the Gustina property. The Tomaszewski property and the right-of-way is empty of trees. Okay? And it's fifty feet, which I do not believe that you can put poles in that right, legal right-of-way, which I have an easement over for my egress and access into my driveway. Now, next year, when they're starting their project, I too will be starting a project, my daughter, my grandkids, my son-in-law are gonna move in. That means I need to extend out by thirty-two feet. I am very concerned about- They have not done any research on the drainage. They said that there has been no research done on that road. I'm not against the project, but I'm very nervous about how it's gonna affect me.
And what's your last name, sir?
Root.
Root, okay.
O-O-T.
So that, you've raised a bunch of points there that I want to ask a bunch of questions about. So first of all, can you, so you've got a fifty-foot wide easement that you're using twenty feet- Yeah, I see where the line is there, but so you've got a fifty-foot wide easement, you use twenty feet of it for your driveway?
Right, when I bought that for my dad, just so I can clarify.
He uses twenty feet as his easement for his-
That right-of-way, my dad, originally that right-of-way was not fifty feet. Originally, it was about thirty-five feet, I believe, but the tractors that would come in there would always cut the corner. So our neighbor's lawn was getting chopped off, so my dad made a proposal. When he got a, my lawn is only eighty feet, but it goes back three hundred and eighty feet. So my dad said, if I make that fifty feet, which is the requirement for a full road, at that time, he wanted someone in the family to be able to develop that eleven acres. Okay? So in exchange, he got a, whatever you call it, variance or whatever, because of the total square footage, it didn't meet the minimum frontage, but it did surpass the total acreage requirement. He got it, whatever you call it, approved.
A variance.
Right, a variance, and then I bought that from him when I got married, and we built there. Now, when we did that, my dad put in a paved driveway. It was his intent in nineteen seventy-four, going back before any conservation commission existed. Okay, since that point in time, we have put a wall extending out about twenty feet into that property. There is an easement with my name on it, on that property, giving me the right to, in perpetuity and to pass on, the ability to travel over what they have not done research on into that driveway. And once again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to, but they're saying poles are going in a wooded land that doesn't exist.
Okay, so hold on, now you're getting to my second question, was about the stone wall, so maybe I will ask you to go up here. Where is the stone wall that you're referencing?
The stone wall, I can show you exactly where it is.
I do have a laser pointer.
Let me go out and build this for me, this part of the house.
Yep.
And this is way out of proportion, because this is nine hundred square feet foundation size. This is six hundred square foot, so that map is-
Okay.
Backwards. The wall, it's a retaining wall, comes out, uh, let's see, it would be in back of-
It's shown here.
It's in back of my, it's in front of the garage. The garage would be this whole thing, but it's, you gotta show it.
I have, um-
Okay, so it comes out right here, the wall is right on-
We're gonna show you a drawing that actually shows your wall.
Yeah, I have the existing conditions.
It's on sheet C one oh one, has the-
So a fundamental legal problem here is the drainage. Now, I know that Paul Wayne had done a survey of the drainage.
There's your wall, you can see the wall is shown.
Right. He had done a survey to tell me, at the time, I thought I was gonna get drainage in. He was right, I haven't had a draw, okay? But I guarantee you, if somebody that doesn't know anything about the drainage on that property, I'm nervous about what's gonna happen now. How many feet are you gonna be taking? It can't be the fifty. You cannot assume that you've got fifty feet to work with, because you don't.
Okay, so let's do that issue now, can you talk about sort of the drainage issues on the roadway?
Sure.
We're not really changing the road at all, this is just where we're installing a couple of poles, so there shouldn't, there should be no change to them.
Well, where are those poles? You can't-
Okay, so hold on, hold on, sir, 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 hold on, we'll, let them talk for a bit here, okay? I'll give you another chance if you need to.
Currently, the road, the existing road is sixteen feet wide.
Yep.
And we are proposing to widen it to twenty, like you had stated. This is the fifty-foot right-of-way, which is correct, that we share. This property owner Tom Tomaszewski shares with, sounds like your family's property as well. So we are proposing to go twenty feet, which if you'll, hold on, just one second.
I know, you can't let go of anything.
I'll show the proposed, so- So you'll see here, this black is the proposed road, it is twenty feet wide.
Okay.
And you're not impacting Mr. Root's wall?
No, we are proposing to, I mean, the very edge of it will be right, there's, we are not proposing to take down any part of that wall.
Not, okay, no, just to clarify, you're not taking any part of the wall? Have you evaluated the stormwater?
No, we have not evaluated the stormwater, and that's a great point that you brought up.
Yeah, it is a good point.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be-
Yeah, I agree.
One quick question, have you spoken at all before?
We sent out letters to everyone within-
We've sent out letters to, well, you guys notify everyone within three hundred feet, we notified the direct butter, so everyone who has a direct property line-
With the site plan and a letter introducing myself.
So this is good, I mean, this is a good way to get these issues addressed. So the roadway will be, you said you're gonna improve the roadway with the gravel, right? And you're gonna extend it from sixteen feet to twenty feet wide?
Which is two feet on either side, is that generally-
Yeah, I mean, that's what sixteen is, but if you look at, if you look at this, the center line of the existing, that might be the proposed. It's a little bit more on the left.
On the wall side.
Twenty feet, what?
Twenty feet.
Right? Is it, oh, it's a sixteen-foot wide road, but it's two foot-
It's sixteen down, we're going to twenty.
It's gonna go to twenty feet. Currently, he has a paved, it's broken pavement, currently it's paved. You're proposing to replace this pavement driveway with gravel. And where is the gate?
It's along the fence, near the rack.
Okay, so he can still access his property?
He'll have complete access as he does now. The gate is up there.
Yeah, it's not until right there.
And, hold on, hold on, and what about the construction process for improving the roadway? I mean, is that literally just dropping down gravel? I'm trying to think of sort of inconveniences to him as this process goes on.
And we'll be happy to coordinate you with you while we do that, of course. And it's gonna be compacting and then substrate, and then playing down the gravel.
And do you have an idea of how long that process takes, or?
Off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
We can coordinate you if you prefer it to be at the beginning of the construction, again, I'm assuming that we're gonna have to do it probably close to the beginning in order to make sure that the road and everything can get back there, and so-
Yep.
For construction, yeah, but you'll have to fix it at the end as well.
Right.
Right. And so, but so twenty feet wide is sufficient for whatever trucks and equipment you guys are gonna need on there? Okay. And then the final point, Mr. Root, is that your name?
Yeah.
Okay, the final point Mr. Root raised was issue with the trees. So I think you had mentioned that the power pole, the poles were gonna be in with the trees, but I think the trees are on the, on the right as we face it, and the poles are gonna be on the other side, is that right?
Yeah, I think we misspoke a little bit, he's correct, there is no trees in this certain, so this is existing right here. This is showing the trees, these circle dots, so on the east, trees. Up here, there's some trees there as well, but this is, as he said, clear. I think what we were trying to say is that the poles made of wood will blend in relatively well with the surrounding trees.
Sure.
So I think that's what we meant, but you're right, there is no, there are no trees, you know, along the driveway, really.
Right.
Right, but the main point I was making there was that the trees, or the poles cannot block illegal access.
Absolutely.
They're not proposed to.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. So- Can we specify pavement for Mr. Root, or just, or do we just go, are we okay with gravel?
I mean, I think that, I think the driveway should be brought back to the condition it's in. I mean, I think if he's got a paved driveway, I mean, would you guys have a problem with that? Would you folks have a problem with the condition being that, that sort of the impact to his driveway replaced to whatever condition it is? So if he's got a paved driveway that the portion that you're having to move or replace would also be paved?
I think that would be good for Mr. Root to have a paved driveway, and it's probably a very little bit for the project, but it would make-
Right.
Just to clarify, just up to where it's paved, right?
Right, yeah. The existing limits of the previous pavement, if you just repaved that for Mr. Root?
Yep. And then sticking with the poles, you said four or five poles, but that's coming from the far back, right? One of these plans has the poles marked on it, is that right? Or the proposed poles?
Yes. We have electrical plans too that are more detailed, but these, the site plans, which is C one oh, whatever, one oh one?
Right. One hundred or one oh one, they both, it looks like they're both on there, but, just so we can, so that they can see it too.
Yeah, so one is proposed here, there.
Okay, so one's right there at the corner.
Yep, and then one is up here beyond the act, the driveway-
Yep.
-that you were mentioning, so that's beyond there, and one further up, and then the last one up here.
Okay, so you see that, Mr. Root, so that it doesn't look like it's impacting the driveway there with where those proposed locations are? Okay, you folks have any questions on this stuff, or can we open up the diner?
Okay, I think the two actions are, you're gonna evaluate drainage in front of Mr. Root's property to make sure there's no impact, adverse impact to his property?
Yeah, and just to clarify on that point, we did evaluate stormwater for the site.
For the site specifically, but-
We just did not focus on the driveway, so we absolutely will do that.
I think it's important to do that.
Can I just ask a question that's sort of tied to this? The culvert that you discussed earlier, is that the same culvert that Mr. Root was referring to? And is that-
I don't even know where that is.
No, culvert time on the other side.
Okay, because you talked about your family putting in a drainage in a culvert, so I just wanted to-
Yeah.
I was wondering if that was one in the same of what-
No, culvert time.
I understand the culvert is way down.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so the culvert, right here.
Okay, I was just gonna sort of put those-
Don't worry, I have a problem with you.
Put those together in the same.
Yeah, I think I need that clarification too.
Where, can you show where the culvert, are you looking for?
Large culvert. That's the box culvert?
It's this one.
Okay.
The one that, are you talking about the oversized one?
Yeah.
The oversized one is in that.
On the project site.
That one?
Yeah. So that's, you can do a box wherever the array is.
Oh, whoa, 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 oh, okay, that's the one you were talking about?
Have you evaluated that one at the end of the road there to make sure that that's gonna be?
No, that's, so that's what I thought we were talking about, is this one here, this is the one that we did not, I mean, we did not know.
Yeah, and I think that both culverts, this small one needs, and the box culvert need to be evaluated for existing current conditions, and determine if they can withstand the load of the construction equipment and any fire equipment that would go over them, based on their existing conditions. If the, if the giant box culvert, it will not be used as part of the roadway, then it's less of an issue, but- They're gonna pass over it, we need to know what the status is.
Okay, yes.
Okay, that's gonna be a condition.
Is there anyone, you wanna come back, you got one more? Alright.
You do, sorry.
Well, one question, what are the squiggly lines?
All the way up here, people are gonna be watching from, they're gonna wanna hear you.
People in town are gonna listen to you, and they wanna hear your voice.
What are the squiggly lines on the boundary lines?
Those are trees.
Trees.
Those are trees.
They go in and out?
Yeah.
So you went in on people's property? No. Okay. Secondly, how close to those boundary property lines are you coming? And are you gonna change the surface? Are you grading that, mowing up that high? Or will that be natural?
Okay, so-
There's a hill there.
Okay, so let's let them answer now, and then we can listen.
So we, we are-
That's fine, okay.
We are not proposing, we're proposing minimal grading, there'll be some grading where the pad's gonna go, but otherwise, as I had talked about before, the way that the racking and mounting system works is that it can accommodate minimal changes in slope. So we're gonna do as little of site work as possible. We can drive the piles at various depths to make sure just the top's flat, and then we can put the panels on top of that, so.
And so, but so the boundary area, right, there's a fifty-foot setback?
There's a, so there's-
Fifty foot, yeah.
Yeah, so the-
So for, to put it in layman's terms, there's fifty feet from the property edges to where the construction will start, where no work will happen. So the first fifty feet from the edge of the property to-
The fence line, and then an additional twenty feet from that fence line to the actual panels themselves. So from seventy feet from the property line to the panels.
Right.
And that's the shortest location, right? I mean, there's ones on the side where it's, it looks like it's a lot farther than that?
Yeah, like over on the west side where we accommodate the wetland buffer, that's a little bit further.
Right, okay.
And very little site work, just for the access road and just for the path.
You got something else? Alright.
It might be worth showing C one hundred, your demolition plan.
But there's a hill there.
Right, so they'll just follow the hill.
Are you going up the hill?
No.
They, well, which way does that go up?
If you pull up the plan and you, and you show the contours of where the hill is, you'll see-
So if you're standing on Plain Street, it goes, why no, yeah, it goes up.
What I'm saying, there's just quite a steep hill.
So go to C one hundred, sheet C one hundred. If I'm, is that the right one? Mine looks different, okay. So if you scroll in-
Zoom in.
Zoom into the knoll that she's talking about, right behind- Zoom into the knoll that she's talking about, right behind.
Bearing a demolition.
Right there.
No.
Yeah, right there.
So those, tho- tho- those little squiggly lines are showing how the land forms?
Mm-hmm.
So you're not going up that hill?
We're gonna go, yeah, we're gonna go over it, but we're not gonna, we're not, the, the hill will be there, there will be panels on top of the hill.
There will?
Yeah.
In my backyard.
But they will be blocked.
No, but you're, we're staying up in our property line.
Why are you going?
It's, it's, it physically will not be in your property backyard, but it will be behind your property.
Yes, this, this is.
Gonna be close to seventy feet away. From your property line.
Or below the hill, it's, the map you sent in the mail shows them further down, on the lower level.
Next. Yeah, let's scroll, let's scroll down to the site plan.
The other thing is, all those roads in there, that's old farmland.
Right.
And those dirt roads are gonna be mud, mud, mud.
Well, they're gonna improve them.
Well, you're gonna have to.
To make them gravel.
Quite a bit, because it gets muddy.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have, they have that planned.
So this is that knoll we're talking about here, so the panels are behind that knoll.
Down on the lower part.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Yes, so it just.
But you're here, so you're not gonna be able to see.
I was at the other.
You won't see there.
Probably won't.
But there, that's the aquifer though, that's.
Oh, I see.
So it's start, I think from your perspective, it starts on the bottom of the other side and sort of rolls down away from the knoll.
That's up here on the left, I mean, it goes deep up, but that's a lower slope.
Okay.
But behind my house, it's deeper.
And, so just on the issue of the buffering, so.
Sure.
Looking at sort of the aerial photographs here, there's sort of existing trees that you can see on this plan here, but on the backside, what specifically are you proposing?
Along the, the back edge of the, of the sites on the north side. Uh, we, so, we're, uh, vegetative screening, um, trees, shrubs.
And those are the smaller trees we were talking about earlier, cause there's nothing actually there right now.
And what kind of trees, shrubs, just native?
If you go to C nine oh one, um, the last page, again, this was added recently, um, we'll show, this is a landscape plan.
Excellent.
So we'll show trees all along the northern boundary.
Okay.
Um, they're mixed between all native, um, non-invasive, uh, you know, balsam firs, we've got, um, black gums, winterberries, so, and they are, I mean, they're not small, eight to ten feet proposed to plant, so.
It's a, it's a decent screen, some of them are, are shrubs, so they're, you know, six feet tall, and then there's the firs and the black gums which will grow to be twenty, thirty feet tall. So it should mature to be a really, a really decent landscape screen. And right now, I believe those properties are almost all owned by a developer that hasn't developed it yet.
Right.
So in the future, when they do, there should be a decent, and it's up there.
The panels are facing the other direction, so from a landscaping perspective, there's no shading or anything that we would be concerned about for that.
Okay.
So we're happy to make sure that that is, uh, not an issue.
Okay. Um, is there anyone else who has any questions or comments? Come on up.
Very patient.
You've been very patient.
Mr. Paul.
Well, I, I think, uh, Benji's got a problem there. A lot of water goes down that road, and, uh, I, I feel, you know, I built this house some time ago.
Good job.
And I owe him a little hand. There should be a set of constructions plans built from the street to the end of his property, just to show what they're gonna do, how the drainage is gonna be handled, cause there's, Ben, you know, there's ruts that deep in there where the water hot washes out, gotta be three feet deep.
Well, some of that may be improved by the roadway being improved, but.
Yeah.
I, I would agree, I think there's been.
I can't hear you anyway, you're just gonna have to listen to me.
Okay. I'm gonna try that sometime here.
So is that, is that your problem? Would've known that five years ago, I would've maybe, uh, tried to hear it.
That works well.
Yeah, I'm sure it does.
Here's what he needs to hear.
But.
Ain't that the truth?
Other than that, take care of Benji, should have a plan approved by the town engineer, so he's satisfied, okay? And, uh, as you can see, this thing is ro- located right in the center of a residential district. Look at an overview. Right?
Forty.
Right in the middle of it. Now, I wanna know how, how is it gonna affect the value of, of the properties in the area? Any study been done on that? How is it gonna affect the, the, the properties on Plain Street? Okay, you've got, uh, my property above. See those lots there?
Yeah.
Those are for building. How's that gonna affect the value of the houses that I built on those lots with, with that thing there? What type of screening do you propose?
So they, they, they did ju- that was what they were just going through, the, the trees that they're planting, um, that will be on that border. Um, there's a full planting plan, uh, trees, and it's six, six to ten feet is what they're going in at, is that right?
Some of the species, again, at the table, um.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, so it's, it's a mixer of, there's gonna be smaller shrubs and bushes, and there's gonna be taller trees, and they're going in at a pretty sizable size, um, when they get planted, so they will hopefully.
So in about thirty years, you'll get screening?
No, actually, they'll screen right away.
Yeah, I think that, that's what's.
They're higher than the panels themselves.
Yeah, so, so the, the, they'll already be screening it when they go on the ground.
Yeah.
Um, I think the point is in thirty years, you'll have huge trees there, and, and, but, but already, they're gonna be covering the.
What I'm concerned is the values of the properties adjacent to this facility.
Have, are there any, any, is there any evidence or any, um, research that's done on that?
We can, we can do some research and provide something with.
There's been some, there's been some chatter on mass planners.
I don't think it has any value.
Hold on one sec, okay?
There's been some chatter on mass planners, cause there's other communities that have solar projects before them. The smart program that they, that they mentioned is, there's a lot of communities that are seeing solar projects right now.
Yeah.
A lot of them, they are.
Right. You can go online and see many of them.
From the planners that have posted or responded, there has not been any studies that have shown one way or the other.
Okay.
So, but that could be additional.
We have a solar field already in town.
We do, it's at the old landfill.
Yep, and are there any residences? Not a lot of residences around that, is there?
None. Not a ton.
Well, there are residences out there though.
There's some.
So, are, are we seeing any reduction in value, do we know, of any of the homes around that solar?
I don't work in the assessor's office, so I can get, I can try to pull that information from them if they have it, um, in terms of the historic, and, or I could ask the assessor directly if she can pull that information for the, for the landfill project, and see if that's changed, but.
Yeah.
I tend to think probably not.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
How big is this project here compared to one we have located at Williston?
It's a good question. Um, I'd have to, it's, I'd have to go back and look at the kilowatts, I wanna say that it's about comparable. I don't think theirs was a meg.
I think this is a little bit bigger, but.
A little bit.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Go back and look.
I don't know.
Okay, did you have something you wanted to add to the?
Exactly what, what you had said, Jessica, it's, it's inconclusive, um, as far as like the, um, the value of nearby residences to solar projects, is really inconclusive, and I don't know if it has to do with no studies, or that, you know, it's almost like it just depends, it's so personal. You know, some people are like, yeah, we would, you know, love to live near a solar project that we know are getting this type of energy nearby, others maybe not. I think it's, it's just inconclusive to say at this.
I find it no different if, that if all those homes had solar panels on their roofs, what would be the difference? You're gonna see that, would that deteriorate their, uh, lower their value of their homes?
It actually.
Solar is supposed to increase their value.
So, but I think getting back to your original point about the abutting properties, I think that from our perspective, one of the keys is this visual screening, so that you've, you've got, when you stand on the lot, you, you wouldn't necessarily know if their solar panels are not, they're not generating noise, they're not generating an odor, you know, it's so. I think that's what we're, we're sort of focused on, cause I think you're right, I mean, the neighbors and the abutters, that's an important consideration.
So would you say, um, it adds value to the neighborhood?
I, I mean, I, I don't know about the valuation, I think that, I think that there probably are, I mean.
I'd like to see a study, if it adds value, let's put 'em everywhere.
Well, I think that, what, what we've heard is that.
They are kinda.
Does that mean you have a new plan for all of those properties you own, Bernie?
Let's put 'em everywhere if it adds value.
But they are.
In, in this situation, it does not add value.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, these people that live on Plain Street are gonna have to go look at that thing out their backyard. Some, some will, they'll love it, others might not like it. However, uh, you, you've got an overview and that, a big picture, a big picture of the area.
Yeah, the visual assessment area.
You mean, uh.
All right, remember, once you walk away from that podium, no one at home can hear what you're saying.
They'll just yell that.
We can't hear you.
I can't hear you. See, you heard me.
Now, now look at, I think they wanna put the, the thing here, or, or.
Yes.
That's right.
And this thing here, you know, and the more appropriate place would be right here. You know, all they'd have to do is exchange properties, that property for that property.
It's too small.
And this, this would be screened, and nobody, you could go from here, all this whole thing, exchange this property here for this property here, and all the problems are solved.
Do you happen to own that property?
Maybe.
Nope. That would be. Chickwin owns it. Okay.
Deal.
All right.
Well, that's not the proposal.
All right.
You can give 'em that, take that.
All right, sir.
You like that?
Can you tell me a little bit about your selection process for that property compared to other properties in the area? Just one second, please, Brian.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, we have some people who specialize in the locations that we look for. We obviously look for places where we can inter, interconnect, which isn't relevant for you guys, but just kinda going through it. And then we look for places where we can build without cutting down trees, without grading the land, where we can provide the, uh, the buffer zones, and places like this one, I, is pretty far back, so the average person isn't gonna drive by it all the time, and it had, where we can face south, so the panels have to be facing south, which is away from that big open space in the back. So, we check a lot of boxes, we find a interested landowner who realizes that there is value in solar, and it can improve their community. So that's how we get to this.
Thank you, excellent, thank you.
Well, hold on one second, let's, are you all sat here?
Well, uh, not yet.
Never. All right, let's.
I'm concerned about the value of the property in the area.
We understand.
Right, you've set, you've, you've set that out, and, and we're gonna do some investigation on that.
Now, what I wanna know is, what's the assessed valuation on that? What they're doing to solar panels and all that stuff, what is gonna be the assessed valuation of that project?
We can find that out.
We're gonna do some research on that.
Yep, we'll find that out for the next meeting, we can't, we don't know that.
That's very important, we, we, we like to be revenue neutral. Okay? If it's, if it's gonna detract from the housing, why not?
Okay, so I think we might have an answer here, or at least a response.
Sure, so, um, the, the, um, the value of, of the system that we're putting there, we're currently working on it, we'll have to submit that with the, for the building permit fees. So, it will, that will be a public number, and when we, we have, um, it finalized, we'll be able to share that with, uh, with who we need to share it, uh, share it with.
Okay.
Uh, as far as taxes, things like that, we, we're, we're open to doing a pilot or any sort of agreement in, uh, in that regard, so.
Yeah, and that's not honestly your jurisdiction, that's the assessors, and I've actually already had a conversation with a member of the board of assessors that there is a solar project, there are others that are, that are contacting the city, that they need to sort of wrap their brains around how, how they're going to do this.
Okay, so assessed value is not our jurisdiction?
I mean, it, it, in terms of setting the assessed value.
Gotcha, I understand what you're saying.
And how, you know, he's talking pilot agreement, that's not necessarily this.
Evaluating impact to other properties is.
But value to other properties? Or impact?
Impact, yeah.
All right.
What I'm concerned about is.
Briefly, and it's gotta be something new here, we're not going back to the same issues, right?
Okay, we're gonna go right back here again, so I'm gonna give you some numbers.
Okay.
Not, I got thirty lots left to do.
Yeah.
Okay? There'll be four hundred thousand dollar houses. That's gonna be twelve million dollars worth of assessed valuation. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
With, um, water and sewer fees and taxes, that brings in, that'll bring in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in taxes and water and sewer fees a year. Now, I wanna know what this is gonna bring in, and if that's gonna have a deleterious effect on the value of my property, putting in thirty houses next to these lovely solar panels.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna try to get some information about the impact that it has on property values, I mean, I think what we, what we are.
I already know, don't have to make the study, not gonna, it's not gonna add value, if it don't add value, it's gonna take away value, right?
Well, no, I don't, I mean, I think the, the goal here would be that you wouldn't, if you were standing on those thirty lots, that you wouldn't know that there were solar panels there anyway.
Because of the screening.
So you wouldn't know if there was anything there, if it was still just a meadow, there's gonna be trees up that are gonna screen it from view, so.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how, how, other than.
We had a view.
Well, hold on, hold on, so I'm just trying to figure out, so other than sort of looking out your back door and seeing this field of solar panels, what other impact do you, like, what other way would that impact the abutting properties, in your opinion?
It doesn't.
It would, it would actually, it'd be only visual.
Only visual, right, so, so, and I.
Not as visual pollution.
Right, I, and I agree with that concern, and so that's why we, we've been talking about their, their screening and their buffering, and making sure that we minimize or completely eliminate any sort of trace of this project if you're on another parcel, and that, that's.
Well, I got a case study for someone, with no, with no screening at all, how would it affect the value?
Well, I think that would, I think.
It's not our project. It's a non-relevant question.
With no screening at all.
Right, so that's not, that's not the project we're talking about.
At what point with screening will it become neutral? How much screening will it take to bring that value up to where, where it is right now?
Well, I don't, I don't know, but so the point to it, I mean, it's gonna be different, so what you, right now, from one of those lots, you may look out and see fields, and when you have screening, you may see these trees, and there may be wooded areas there, so perhaps that's something, it's hard to quantify something like that as far as what won't increase or decrease, but the idea here is to limit or eliminate the sort of visible pollution, as you call it, of seeing this project from another parcel, and so that's what we're talking about here to try to figure out that solution. Yes, okay.
I have something for you. You got thirty houses, you got a wonderful solar, uh, garden, or whatever you wanna call it. You can put solar and use the electricity from the solar panels in your houses. Isn't that a wonderful idea?
You'll not convince the buyers of that, now, then.
All right, so we're, I'm going to give someone else a chance, okay? Is there someone, is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet, before we give you another shot? Anybody else that hasn't spoken that would like to come up, please, come on down.
Kathleen Havler, and I live on West Street, and not in proximity to this, but I am curious, what's the length of efficiency to the solar panels?
The, like, the lifespan of the project?
A lifespan, right.
So, we have what is called PPA, who, someone's buying the energy for twenty years, but we have a lease that goes to twenty five, in five extra years, twenty five into thirty. And we've found that a lot of companies are now seeing that these can last longer than thirty years, but this one has a max of thirty years that it will be in place.
So, thirty years, it will, your plan is to shut it down, or thirty years you would need to replace the equipment?
We, well, we were, there's studies that say the equipment lasts longer at this point, but are, as a company, we say thirty years is, at that point, it becomes not producing what it's worth. If we get to thirty years and the landowner decides, and we decide it's still working, and the screen's still up, and everyone's still happy, we can increase that option, but right now, it's thirty years.
It's a thirty-year plan.
I mean, I think you also have to think about where technology might be in thirty years, and we have no idea.
Right.
There are panels that have been around a very long time, and they're old, and they're still efficient, and they're still running.
Okay.
And if you make the decision that you don't want to continue, we'd be in the decommissioning.
Yes.
Yeah. Any follow-up or other, sure.
Okay.
Have any health studies been done regarding living within close proximity to this many panels?
Yes, there have been plenty, there's been a, many studies done regarding the EMFs. I know those are a pretty big concern. Our cell phones tend to be more dangerous than a lot of the cellphone, the, the solar panels that are out there. We can, we can provide, along with, when we do the property value research, we can provide any health studies that we find, and we will submit those with the supplemental materials to you guys.
That'd be great.
Also, with, other than you have some cell phone radiation, toxicity issues have come up today, and we do clean with water and vinegar, which won't have much effect on anything. And then, any of the oil-type substances in our transformer is like mineral water, vegetable oil, it's very, it's non-toxic. So, all the liquid flowing is not going to pollute the aquifer.
Even in the transformers?
Yeah.
That's correct.
The mineral water, yeah, so that we met with the group earlier today.
Yeah, so you met with the aquifer protection, and, and they have comments or a report or something?
I didn't receive any.
So, we just met with them, and they said that they're going to provide them soon, so we're probably, we're coming back.
Okay.
And we'll address that.
Okay. Yes, sir, come on down.
My name's Lawrence Kruzak, 103 plane. I want to know, on a ninety-degree day, without solar panels at that site, what would the temperature be on a ninety-degree day with, around the solar panels, within a fifty to hundred-foot radius? What's the temperature, once those solar panels are there, in the surrounding vegetation, in the surrounding property? Perhaps houses built within fifty to seventy-five feet wide?
Oh, interesting, so, so do they generate heat or capture any heat that's sort of noticeable?
They do generate heat, but it's, it tends to be contained within the panel.
Do studies show that?
We can, we can look into it for you.
Okay.
I'd be curious about that, I mean, I assume, I mean, we're talking about some significant setbacks, I'd be surprised if it's generating heat off of the property, but I'd be curious to see that, too, that's interesting. If you have, if you have sort of research on that or data, that'd be interesting to see.
I know that the panels do heat up enough to the point where they can melt snow. In the wintertime, the, the snow tends to get wet underneath and then just slide right off, so at least hot enough to melt snow.
Well, the other thing is, if you're planting trees around the radius of the solar panels, is it could be adverse effect on the vegetation that you're trying to shade, or, you know, put a border up to protect the builders or the residents in that area.
I, I agree, I think that they're going to be setback enough, but I can, I can look into that, that's a, that's a good question, thank you.
Your comment about the snow there just made me think of something, so is there, we've talked about the sort of three to four times a year doing maintenance and coming out there, is there, do you have like remote monitoring or something to sort of keep an eye on things to see if something goes wrong?
We monitor all of our systems, we've got a scatter control, where it, basically, each one of the, either combiner boxes or the inverters, if we're using string inverters, basically, it'll, it'll let us know when something drops in voltage, so we'll know exactly where it is, we can send an electrician out. When we, when we find out, they go, they can fix it usually in a day or so.
What about, like, other site issues, like, do you have, like webcam or anything like that, where, to see if there's issues with, you know? And of course, I think sometimes we've dealt with the other ones, like, there can be issues with snow and ice sometimes, or, I'm wondering if there's sort of day-to-day monitoring, or if it's the kind of stuff that you'll notice it in the performance, and that.
We'll notice it in the performance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we notice something is, is dipping, usually the first thing we'll do is check the weather, and see if there is a big snowfall, or something like that, and then if we can't diagnose it from there, we'll, we'll send someone out.
And how close, when you send someone out, how, where are you sending them from?
Uh, we would get someone local, uh, we do.
Subcontractors or something like that, okay. Anybody else, come on back up.
There's seats on the side if you want to just, you know, so you don't have to go back and forth.
Well, one of my main concerns is that solar companies come and they go. And when you go, who will take care of your wonderful panels, and where will they be? You've been in business for four years.
So, we were bought out by a giant Japanese firm, so we're all American-based. Forefront in this company is San Francisco, New York, DC.
But it's Japanese, um.
They, that's Japanese money bought us, so they're investing to help us benefit this. They have been around pretty much as long as the US has been around.
Does Japan cover their whole world with?
Okay, hold on, can you let, but can you let her answer first, and then?
So, whatever entity owns the project, there will be money set aside in the bond that would take care of the decommissioning of the project. It may not be us, but it will be someone, and if it isn't us, and no one buys it, there will be that money set aside in order to remove the panels and restore it.
How long is your lease good for?
Twenty years, plus two-fiver options.
But so that's what we talked about at the beginning, the decommissioning and the bond set aside, so that, because, because you are right, that, that scenario where somebody disappears, and the city looks around, and they're the ones holding the bag, is the one we want to avoid at all costs, so if we, if there's money set aside, which is also why we're working on trying to get a good estimate and a safe estimate for what that would cost.
The fact that it's a foreign-owned company is another thing.
No, it's invested, we are here, ours, everyone is.
But frankly, for evaluating the project, it doesn't really matter, I mean, especially because we are getting money set aside for the, for the decommissioning, so.
And I think the main thing to consider is the aquifer. There is evaporation under these panels. If you drive up County Road in Southampton, you'll see that solar farm, there are no trees surviving too well around it.
Okay, well, we're going to get, we're going to get comments and a report from the Aquifer Commission as well, so we'll see what their thoughts are, there was a hearing this afternoon, and we'll definitely listen to what they have to say.
Well, I'm done.
Thank you.
It sounds like we're going to need to redo this, come back to, to add it another time.
Continue, yeah, we definitely need more information. First of all, is there anyone else here tonight who has something to add, understanding that we will have another hearing, and people can have another opportunity to? Okay, the other question is whether we want to do a site visit?
Well, that's, so that was two things, so I want to read off the list, so that everybody's clear about what's been requested, that the applicant is clear, and the board is clear, and make sure I didn't miss anything, so that. And then, two, whether there should be a consideration for a site visit. We don't have a meeting on July fourth because of the holiday, so our next meeting is?
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
I think.
I know, I know, I know.
I think that I would like to go out and take a peek at the site.
Yeah. Yeah, yep.
I think that makes sense, I agree. Okay, Jessica, so, you want to do site visit planning first?
So, let's do site visit planning first. Can we do, our people have vacations coming up within the next two weeks? Should we stay away from the week of July fourth, that would probably?
I'm gone that weekend. I'm gone that week.
Okay. You're going to Foxwoods, is that what you're?
No, I said I'm gone the following week.
Oh, yeah. Are we sharing our vacation plans, is that the? I mean, we could, we could try to do it the week of the.
Could we try to, all right, would you be available on a Saturday, or is that above and beyond?
That'd be best, right? That was Saturday, July, but yeah, no, I don't think that would be.
Next Monday, can we do it on the Monday evening, like a?
On, like, the third?
The twenty-sixth?
Oh. I won't be gone, but you are, you can happily go on a site visit, but I will not be gone.
I have a board meeting.
You have a board meeting? Are you cheating on us?
If you want to schedule it for next week, that's fine, but I will not be here, I can go out on my own and, and walk around, that's not a problem.
Well.
I'm gone that whole week, but I can also.
How about Wednesday, the twenty-eighth?
Next week wouldn't be bad, if, if it works for, sometime next week.
How about an evening, can, Jim, could you do like an evening meeting, like a?
Thursday might be possible, Wednesday, I've got our building committee for the build-out of the new East.
Okay, so like, if we did, if you did.
I could do the twenty-ninth, the evening.
All right, so Thursday, you guys are at the end of the table there.
Chris, Thursday, the twenty-ninth, in the evening?
I'll take, I go by there all the time, so.
Okay, Harry, do you want to go, can you do the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
All right, so.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like Thursday, the twenty-ninth.
Okay, like six?
At six o'clock?
Good.
Okay. Of the public are welcome, they're all leaving, but they're welcome, you're welcome to attend. Everybody's gone, nobody cares. But you're, you're welcome to join, and they won't, the board will not be deliberating, and it's all question and answers, basically. So, if there's anything site-specific that you want to talk about out in the field, feel free to join, it's not, it's not just for the board.
Shall we meet at Mr.?
The twenty, the twenty, everybody's going to park in your driveway.
We're meeting in your living room.
Yeah.
The twenty-ninth at six.
That's a good question.
So, that road.
June.
June, a week from Thursday.
July.
What do you recommend we gather?
Well, we were just talking about Mr. Reeves.
The right-of-way is co-owned with the City of East Hampton, because that is a protected open space, that's the Christina property, so.
So, we can drive out that farm road?
Yeah, there's, there's great access right here, I mean, it's filled, but it's, we, you know, we drill all the way.
So, just drive right in? Okay.
And you can go for a hike afterwards.
Okay. All right, so we'll. All right, so we'll plan on meeting on the site at six o'clock on Thursday, the twenty-ninth. All right, and Jessica, I think it's good to go down the list of what we actually mentioned.
Let's review the list here, I'm going to put it in my calendar, even though I'm not going to be. Okay, so the first thing I had was provide an image and dimensions of the transformer box.
Oh, yeah.
I will type this up, and I will email it to you, as well as to the board.
That would be excellent, yeah.
You don't need to put it in the minutes, you're all good.
Rest your hand.
We'll provide a summary of the flow dissipation. Those are city engineers.
Oh, yeah, from one of his comments.
First, still want that?
What was I asking for? No, it was the city engineer.
City engineer.
Consider flow dissipation improvement.
Summary of the flow dissipation. You got that?
We don't know what it means.
Okay, but I think for the city engineer's perspective, I think, we'll, we'll figure it out. Okay. There was, you had noted that you would provide a SWIP, and so, Bernie?
Bernie.
Bernie?
We're still going here, if you could be quiet, we can hear you.
So, the SWIP, I presume that's something that would be filed once the project's permitted, but, so that's not something you want now, but maybe it would be a condition of condition.
Yes, it'll be a condition.
Okay. Okay.
And we'll take a look at the road as well, as part of that, we'll add that to the.
To the SWIP.
Oh, we got more, we got way more things, patience.
Okay, so, I'm giving a breakdown of the bond numbers to be reviewed by the city engineer.
Yeah.
Evaluate the stormwater at the roadway entrance at the root property. The question was about the two culverts, can they handle the load of trucks based on existing conditions?
Yep, including emergency vehicles, so I think probably the fire truck is the biggest.
What's that? Okay.
And the construction stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, construction vehicles, but.
Valuation of land, is there any studies in result to impact of evaluation of land for solar projects? If there's studies that you might have at hand, but I'm going to do my own independent research as well. I wrote health.
Yeah, health studies.
Health studies.
For living in proximity, yeah.
Data on heat generation?
Yep.
Right.
Thermal impact, is a good way to phrase it.
Thermal impacts, okay. And a copy of the Bay Pac comments. And the two.
Wait, what was, Bay Pac?
Bay, Bay Pac.
Oh, Barnes Aquifer, yeah, gotcha.
Now, is that last item something that they're going to provide to you, is that right?
I don't know, I presume Patty Gamberini will send it to me, but if not, you should follow up as, as, you know, the applicant team to make sure that she's drafting it, and get a sense of when they should be ready for the board.
It'll still be a question for us.
So, the, the draft conditions that you've discussed, that I've just made a note on, was, one, replacing the paved driveway at the root property.
Yeah.
And then the SWIP plan. So, those are the two draft conditions that you've discussed.
Possibly also they agreed to the hydro seeding and the pollinator-friendly metal seed, those would probably be conditions as well.
Hydro seeding and pollinator-friendly.
Jessica, would you want to just repeating the two for hydro seeding?
So, the draft conditions, is that what, that's, yeah, okay. So, one was, so any driveway that's, that is going to be disturbed at the root property would be replaced with paved, not gravel as proposed. And then, requiring a SWIP plan to be filed with the city, city engineer prior to the release of a building permit is probably what it will end up being, or something like that.
And the only other one that I don't think is a condition, but we've discussed, was the change in the deadline for decommissioning would be one hundred and fifty days instead of a year.
Okay, hold on, deadline. You want to change it to a hundred and fifty days?
I think that's what it is under the bylaw, but under their, under their plan, and I'm sure it's just one they've used before, it's within one year of discontinued operations that they'll decommission, but I think under the bylaw, it's within a hundred and fifty days.
I see.
So, just to make sure we don't lose that in the weeds.
Okay, all right, do I have everything?
I think that's everything that we did today.
I motion to continue the site.
Hold on one second.
My bad, didn't see it.
Before we go.
She's got one, there's.
Yeah.
Right in before the buzzer.
In this area?
We are not proposing any, any cameras or anything.
No, to monitor.
So, what, so when I asked the monitoring question before, what he had said is that they can, they monitor each one of the panels and the equipment that's there, and it sort of shows real-time production, so they can tell if there's issues with a panel, if something breaks, or if there's an issue, my question came up with snow and ice, if something was not sliding off on its own, or there was some sort of impact that, that they don't need to monitor visually, but that they can track each of the devices. Is there something you're thinking of, that, that?
Just a safety issue, if somebody should, they're not supposed to be in that area, but if, say, someone got in that area or something, could it be vandalized, could it be terrorized?
They'd know, because they'd monitor the dip in electric output.
I'm curious, too, I, I was trying to think of the same thing, because it seemed like a logical thing to have a webcam visually looking at it, but it seems like.
It was everywhere now.
Right, it seems, and I'm literally thinking out loud here, but I, everything I'm thinking of that could happen would likely be an impact on the machines, which they can sort of monitor and tell. So, I guess it wouldn't tell you that someone had climbed the fence and camped out in a corner, but it would tell you if they did anything to the equipment.
It's a barbed wire fence around the whole site, too, so it means you've got a six-foot-tall fence with another foot of barbed wire on top of it.
I don't think there's going to be anyone jumping into play with.
It's making way down the road. If this project had to be dismantled, would that piece of property still be able to be used for housing? Or is there anything about this thing that would make this a piece of property that East Hampton has to kind of sit on, or not be able to use for another?
Right, and that's why part of the decommissioning plan, like the costs for decommissioning it, is contemplating that it would bring the property back to its condition today, basically. So, whatever this cost is that they're going to come up with, and we're going to have reviewed that number, they're going to set that money aside, and it would allow either them or us, the city, to take everything out, remove it entirely, and, and put it back to the way it is today.
And we're not introducing any hazardous materials, so there would be no lingering.
Okay, that was my other thought, did it make, you know, the ground or anything there, that, you know, it would be, because it's a considerable size.
Yeah, good question, I think the decommissioning concept is, that's a really good one that we need to be out in front of, so that's good.
All right, thank you.
Anything else tonight?
The date, Jess, of the meeting for continuance.
July eighteenth.
I motion to continue the special permit for Plain Street Forefront Property Power LLC to July nineteenth, did I?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, sorry, eighteen.
There's a motion on the floor, so.
But sure, you, what, do you have a comment?
Logistics, I didn't know, can I do that after we close this?
Well.
Well, can you not, do the eighteenth, is that?
No, 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 that's fine, I just meant like, when can we submit?
Let's talk about that after.
Okay, great.
Yeah, okay, all right, so there's a motion to continue to the eighteenth, can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, abstaining, okay. So, we will see you at the site, and then see you on the eighteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jessica, is, is, what is the meeting, what is the, our next meeting is also, is that the eighteenth?
Yeah.
So, we're going to have this and?
And the, ooh-ha-ha, yeah.
Yes, and cottage industries, and recreational marijuana.
Oh, gosh.
And there's other stuff, too.
I can hardly feel a cold coming on.
I have a draft agenda already going, so there's other things right on the table. I mean, so we could, we could theoretically kick recreational, I mean, Marty sort of, he didn't formally continue it, did he?
You take care now.
We have adjourned, all right?
Right, we have not adjourned.
I made a motion, we adjourn.
Wait, hold on. All right, folks, we're still going here.
Still meeting, sorry.
I made a motion, we adjourn.
Uh, any administrative items we need to discuss?
No.
Okay, so we should formally move, I guess, to continue the recreational marijuana meeting to the, do you mind if we put it off another meeting?
I'm not happy about it, but I don't see that we have any options, it's a very full agenda, and I'm the least reasonable in that department.
Okay, so, the meeting after that.
August?
Is it, so would that be the?
Oh, it was supposed to be on this meeting.
The first, August first.
August first.
All right, so can I get a motion to continue that?[1795.88]